Okay, Reinhart, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Siverson, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Falcoff.
Mr. Falcoff, I think you might be muted.
There we go. Can you hear me now? I'm here.
Yes. Ms. Norick?
Here.
Mr. Pelletan?
Here.
Mr. Sermon?
Let's see.
Uh, Chuck Urban?
Here.
And Chairman Slater?
Here. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under the stay-at-home order issued by the Governor Jake B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals, and this evening we're conducting our business in compliance with state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access channel six. It has also been broadcast on the Internet, on YouTube Live, and the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on channel six or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 680-592-126. You may also submit your comments to YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes, as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on November 24th of this year. Our recommendations to the board are advisory-only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There is one small exception to this rule if this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application. In order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's also a requirement concerning our board that we operate on a basis that at least four members must be affirmative to give a positive recommendation. So we have now, I think we have six members present, so four of six members must vote positively to a recommendation. Ordinarily, as I said before, this board consists of seven members. Right now, we have six. Ms. Roberts and Mr. Siverson sit with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and are not voting members of the board. So again, you will need four of six members today to approve an application. In recognition of this feature, the fact that we don't have a full board, we offer the applicant an opportunity to request a continuance to the next available date on our schedule, the next available meeting. Available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is November 18th of this year. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the orders set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points and with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, Teams chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application will may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand at this time if you sworn in. I don't think I can see you, so I'm assuming all the people that want to testify tonight, I assume you're raising your right hand, and I'm asking you, do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say "I do." Alright, so I want to... Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Reinhart, I don't believe the other petitioner for Quuckers Chicken is in the meeting yet. So when they get in, we might need to swear them in separately.
Okay, okay, that's good. Thank you. So Mr. Siverson, will you please call the first case?
Sure. Case 2020-Z35 for 1215 Washington Avenue. The petitioner is Eric Olson, requesting a special use for a small medical clinic, which is React Physical Therapy, and this is for an expansion of an existing special use. They're currently located in the building, just expanding into adjacent space. And Mr. Olson is here if you would like to give a brief presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. First of all, I'd just like to say we've certainly had a really great experience operating in Willmet today. And the reason for the expansion is largely that we've been able to serve the community, and we feel like we've been a really good fit for the community. And in addition, we have five other locations around Chicago, and those locations are actually the size that Willmet would be if we were to expand. And so we want to make that commitment to Willmet, to size this clinic the way that we normally would, such that we can add things like private space for patients that might request such things, and also have a laundry on site and a number of other amenities we typically have. We don't intend to increase the number of physical therapists. We have practicing at the clinic. We have three full-time physical therapists right now, and our intention is to keep that and just give them the proper space that we would prefer them to have to operate on, per how we operate our other five clinics. And again, I just think, you know, we've been really happy to be part of the fabric of Willmet, and I think if you take a look at any of the Google reviews and other things around, I think we've done certainly right by the people of Willmet and the adjacent towns. So that's all from me.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Olson, I was wondering if you could walk us through the expansion plans. I'm not sure I quite understood them, and I'm wondering what space do you currently occupy, and what will you be adding on?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll do my best. I'm not a real estate expert, but I will say we have, the space we currently have in the building is not on the street frontage on Washington. It's the space that's sort of in the back, kind of adjacent to the alley. And what we're trying to do is expand the space that gives us the street frontage, which we typically do with our other clinics, right? So we can get some natural light, frankly, in the space for our patients and so forth, because all of our patients are coming in in pain. And we just want to create an environment that's conducive to getting people better. And, you know, frankly, light's a big part of that in that kind of more airy space. The other piece we're trying to really get added is typically in a clinic for us, we have a private room for folks that would need that or want that, privacy. So that's going to give us the ability to do that as well. In addition to, typically at our other clinics, we have just more physical space, which allows for better room to do exercises, right? So when, you know, patients need to go and do stretches or other things, we want to have ample room for those patients. Particularly now, but in any case, we've always structured our clinics with a lot of open space for that, so we can do all the tests we need to do, whether it's getting somebody back to play on a sports field or just getting them back to day-to-day life.
Hey, Lucas, could you put up the plan that's part of our packet?
Sure.
And I'd like to say, I went by the property, but I didn't see anyone there, so I didn't feel comfortable just coming in.
Yeah, this is the main entrance to the building, and the space back here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but that's where they're currently located, and this will be the new space where they would be going into.
So where's the laundry facility?
I don't think, again, I'm not an expert on these plans, but I will say, like, it's not, I wouldn't say a facility, but we were just going to put a washer dryer in the space.
Yeah, it's right here.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah. It's just, yeah, one washer, one dryer.
Yeah, it's just a washer dryer, so we can do our own stuff in the space.
And the private room you were talking about?
We're looking for that, kind of more on the front of the plans area.
Up here, I believe.
That's right.
And so the space that you'll occupy is all of the white space, not the hash-marked areas?
That's correct.
I have a question. I don't know if Mr. Olson can confirm this or not. I did go by today, and I actually was a patient there when they occupied the hatched-out space on the left, upper-left corner of the plans. This is their third, well, second expansion, but their third iteration, as I understand it. And when I was there, it was very rudimentary, and they really have, it's very professional. And I know that that space has been, the space you're expanding into has been empty for some time. I think the gal who was there said for two years or more. Is that, can you confirm that?
I can't confirm exactly the two-year number, but it had been vacant for a while, and we were just lucky that a project, I guess, had fallen through that gave us the ability to expand into it.
So I have a quick question, just so I understand. The top is the Washington street frontage, right?
Yeah, the top of the drawing, that's correct.
And let me understand again, the hashed areas are separate tenants. You don't occupy any of that hashed area, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so those are separate tenants, okay. Thank you.
The one in the upper-left that I was referencing being in earlier is now a nail salon.
Okay.
Actually, this is Bob Sermon. Actually, I think the hashed part on Architect, hashed part on the right looks like a common area. So that's the way you access your space through the hashed area on the right. It looks like you, you know, you have a new door up near the top, and you still maintain that door to the initial space.
Yeah, that's correct. That's a shared hallway. That's exactly right.
Will your hours of operation change at all with the expansion?
They will not.
And then you mentioned that you'll continue with your three full-time physical therapists. You're going to be adding, though, a physical therapy aide?
We do have one PT aide right now. We are planning to add another, actually. That's always in the plans prior to expansion.
So that gives you five people. Do they all show up at the same time, or are they staggered throughout the day?
We do stagger shifts, that's correct.
Okay. Because I was there this morning, early, and I don't know what time you'll be there early, or how early you'll start. I was there about 7:30, and I noticed that parking was, it was good, but still limited because you had all the people showing up for the sports fitness programs there that are early in the morning. Do you show up after they've had their rush, their morning rush?
The sports fitness people, meaning the folks to our east?
Yeah, they are to the east, and they were also on the north side of the street. You know, they brought out all their equipment into the open air for, I'm sure, COVID reasons. But they were busy. They were very busy first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I'll tell you that generally the most requested appointment times that we get are typically pretty early. I mean, oftentimes we'll get folks who would prefer to be in as early as 6:00 AM. So oftentimes, like, our busiest time will be about, you know, 6:00 AM to midday, and then we'll have some pickup in the late afternoon.
Okay.
But I think actually one other pertinent thing to add there actually is just the way we operate. So we spend at least 30 minutes with a PT with a patient, too. So that's not like some other facilities in the PT space where you might have three patients within a half an hour with one therapist. We really kind of space people out and spend time with them. That's our differentiator in the market.
Okay.
So can you address how many patients you have at any one time? What, say, the maximum number of patients you would see at one time? And then maybe how many patients you have throughout the day?
Yeah, it's a good question, I think. So maybe is it helpful to frame that maybe in terms of patients in any given hour that were open, for the first part of your question? So patients in terms of any kind of given hour that were open. If we have two therapists there coinciding at that time, you could see up to probably four to five patients perhaps in the space if we were fully booked, which typically doesn't happen. I mean, we sit typically maybe more on the 70% to 80% sort of a capacity on most days. And in an average week that we are open, our target for a team of three PTs is about 150 patient visits that we should do in that week. And again, we've been operating, prior to COVID, we would have been operating more on like the 70% range of that 150 target.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
This is in the Village Center, right? So there are no parking requirements. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Siverson, have I heard from anyone else? Is anyone else that wished to speak on this application?
Yeah, let me see if there's anything in chat. There is nothing in chat. Lisa, were you checking on YouTube chat?
Yes, there is no one on YouTube, and no email is coming.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. That's not totally surprising. Can we, can we have a motion then?
Gerald, this is Bob. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a small medical clinic, React Physical Therapy, in accordance with the plans submitted. The Zoning Board of Appeals will determine if the use runs with the land for the use, and it runs with the use.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Right. Okay, Mr. Sermon?
It's, you know, a minor request. I think it meets all the requirements. I'm glad to see that Willmet's business is growing. Even though it's not a well-traveled path right there, it's nice to see the storefronts lit up again, so I can support the project.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Sermon that, you know, I think that having that empty storefront there for a long time, and I noticed that there's a, it looks like half of their space. We would benefit from having a business continue and thrive and grow, even though I don't think that growing substantially is part of their plan, but having enough space to do what they need to do. And I, as I said, was in the much smaller space initially, and this was several years ago, when I was rehabbing from a knee injury, a knee replacement. And, you know, one of the things that we did was walk with bands around our ankles, right? And you walk from one end of the room to the other end of the room. And so I can see where if you have several patients, if you have three, four, or five patients, and a couple of them have to do that, especially with the circumstances we're under right now, that you need more space for them to be able to move around safely without causing contagion problems. So I think that it makes a lot of sense. It doesn't seem like it's going to be an additional burden in terms of traffic, and so I can support it.
Any other comments?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I do think that Mr. Olson's done a good job of demonstrating how his request meets the standards of review. He's been operating in the village, and I'm happy to support the expansion.
I'm also happy to support the expansion. Given the workouts that I saw this morning over there, I think you'll probably have a lot of patients, an expanding number of patients.
I have nothing else to add. I too can support the proposal.
The same here. I don't, everything's been said. There's not more I can add. So no other comments. Can we go to a vote?
Certainly. Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
And Chuck Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Slater?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees. They may just have this on the consent agenda, but they may want to be there. This case will be heard by Mr. Siverson.
November 24th.
24th. Thank you. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2020-C-35.
I'll second that. Okay. Can you call up for a vote, Mr. Siverson?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Slater?
Yes. We can proceed to the next case. Mr. Siverson, can you please go to the next case?
Yes, I did email the applicant to ask if they were having problems connecting to the meeting, and they did say that they were in the virtual waiting room, but in my screen, I am not seeing them as being in the waiting area. So I asked them to disconnect and try reconnecting to see if that will work. So they are actually not on the call right now.
We'll wait a bit and make sure that we can accommodate them.
This is Bob. Sometimes, as all of you know, I have difficulty connecting with my computers, and recently somebody said, if you really have that trouble, try just using the app on your phone. So if this person still has difficulty, you may want to suggest them, if they have the app on the phone, to utilize that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, I might just try meeting myself and just try calling them quick to see if I can help to walk them, walk them through it. Sorry.
Just out of curiosity, while we're waiting, is this being televised and broadcast?
I believe so.
Okay.
So don't make funny faces.
Yeah, funny face contests.
I guess I can't eat any more Halloween candy then.
Well, the good news is we can only see you from the neck up, so if you put on a few hats, we'll never notice.
I guess we could shut your camera off for a minute when we take a moment.
Did you all get trick-or-treaters this year, or was it pretty much canceled?
It was kind of quiet, but we got them.
Yeah, there were some.
Well, Reinhart knows where we live in Kenworth Gardens. It's a major thoroughfare for kids It's a major thoroughfare for kids looking for candy, just because the homes are so close together and the streets are double blocked, so we didn't have as many as normal, but we went through a lot of candy.
It was pretty busy.
Did you take a little setup outside, or did they come to the door?
No, at least our block. What happened was everybody put out tables by the sidewalk and then sat at their front stoop, so you're what, maybe 30 feet away, 20 to 30 feet away, and just basically monitored. A lot of people brought out fire pits and made sort of a party. It was very fun, and thank goodness for the weather. I would love to do that in the future, if the weather would cooperate.
We had a tube on a tripod, so there was a slide for the candy, and I kept trying to convince children that they had to put their mouth on the end of the tube, and they would slide it right in.
We had neighbors that set up a formal dining table on their front lawn and brought out a candelabra that Lurch and the Munsters would be proud of. They had every candle going, and they sat out there with a fire pit, and they had munchies and whatnot as they, you know, gave treats out to the kids. It was pretty funny.
People are so creative.
They are, they are. Not at our house, but...
Yes, Lucas is having trouble connecting.
Could the applicant just phone in?
I think he can. I don't think he has to be visible, but I'm not sure. Is that something I wanted to check with Lisa, if she's still on?
We've had a few that were just called in, so.
Yeah, I think we can dictate to people if they don't have the ability.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, I was able to get in contact with the applicant. He's going to try using the call-in number, so just kind of foregoing the app altogether. So hopefully he's able to do that, so. Any minute now.
This is Mr. Mertinger, yes?
Correct.
Who was it who said it was going to be a short meeting? You jinxed it.
What an idiot.
You jinxed us.
What? Oh.
You jinxed us.
Yes.
Technical difficulties. It seems like we do have them every meeting, so what can you do?
Have you had this particular issue where the applicant wasn't able to join?
Well, but Bob often has trouble where he can't hear him or we can't see him.
I actually switched to a different computer. I switched to my old computer. I think my new computer had too much security stuff on it to allow it to work.
Good evening. Good evening.
Okay, yes. Yeah, Reed, this is Lucas. Yep. You're on the call now. The zoning board is here, and before we can call your case, we just need to do a quick swearing-in for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mertinger. Can you hear me?
I certainly can, yes. Uh-huh.
I need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Sermon, could you please call the case?
Sure. Case 2020-Z36 or 1515 Sheridan Road. The petitioner is Reed and Deborah Mertinger, and they are requesting a special use for a limited-service restaurant, which is Cluckers Charcoal Chicken. And this place was previously occupied by No Man's Pizza right down the corner of Sheridan Road. So it's been vacant since, I think, 2017 is when the last, No Man's Landing was last in there. And Mr. Mertinger, if there's anything that you would like to add, please go ahead.
First of all, I'm sorry I didn't get on the call properly with this video, but good evening and thank you for letting us apply for the space over at Plaza Del Lago. We presently operate two restaurants called Cluckers Charcoal Chicken, one in Highwood and one in Libertyville, my wife and I do, and we've been doing that since 2008. And both very successful operations. We pride ourselves in quality. We do charcoal chicken, so the two restaurants we have now are really full-service restaurants with the hope that the opportunity at Plaza Del Lago will allow us to try a little bit different model, which is more of a pickup-and-to-go operation, a little bit limited menu than we have presently. And with today's crazy times, we thought this would be an appropriate time to try this, just because about 80% of our business now in both locations is pickup and delivery. So our model really has been perfect for these kind of times. You know, we have our own delivery trucks, and they have chickens on top of them, so they're like moving billboards. And we service both, all the North Shore areas, everywhere from Highwood up until Gurnee from both restaurants, and have a great following. And we've been fortunate enough to be able to live through these tough times with good, strong business and be able to keep our employees working and our customers fed.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mertinger. I'm sure there's some questions the board will have for you.
Okay.
This is Bob Sermon. Good evening. I have a question. Is there, since you will have those two delivery trucks, is there the ability to have dedicated parking space for your drivers, or how is that going to work?
Yeah, actually, the landlords and I have talked about it, and there's a big, big shopping center, as you know, and they're aware of the trucks and have no problem with parking them in the parking lots.
Okay. The other question I have is, there was a local resident that had an issue when said we'd received the information they were concerned about the garbage area and that, I believe, all the containers would have lids. And being in the restaurant industry a little bit, I know that you're required to have a, you know, probably a two-court container, and the lid's got to be closed for health reasons, so I imagine you comply with that.
Yeah, we do. We presently have waste service with two different companies. The company that actually is in the plaza is advanced disposal, so we'll use their service. And presently, in our restaurants, we have, depending on time of year, between two to three pickups a week. And all our receptacles, in talking to the landlord, we behind our restaurants so we could have easy access to them and certainly be able to close them.
Sure. And do you have a deep fryer as well?
We do, and we presently use Darlene at one location, and they put a grease receptacle in back of the restaurants for us to drop them off, and they come and pump them up every month.
Okay. And then I think the last question for right now here is, for other projects I've worked on, sometimes when there is an issue with smoke, and I don't know how much smoke is from charcoal, that, you know, does that become, are your other, I guess, do your other locations have residences so close, and when you leave your restaurant, is it really a strong odor from all the smoke? I know I've worked on barbecue restaurants, and you would think with smokers it would be a problem, but oftentimes it's not at all, so.
Well, interesting, it's a good question. So our restaurant in Highwood backs up to an apartment complex, and our restaurant in Libertyville backs up to a significant residential area. But, you know, you do get smoke, because you're right, we're doing charcoal chicken, but the exhaust systems we have in this particular location are the highest quality, and they'll be able to handle the smoke that comes up in them.
So you'll be modifying the existing hood system they have there?
No, actually, what's nice about it, there are actually three different hoods, and there'll be one separate hood for the rotisserie.
I see. But that's a modification you're adding to accommodate your use?
No, no, it's the same. It was there before. Actually, that particular hood was used for a pizza oven. We'll open the rotisserie and do that.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So this is Brad. Yeah, this is Brad Falcoff. We were given a copy of your layout or plan, and I'm just trying to understand, in the front of the restaurant, are we looking at some limited seating there in the front of the restaurant when you walk in the door?
Let me just pull it out.
And maybe Lucas is looking for.
So the plan I sent you, there was seating in the restaurant before. We're not going to have seating in the restaurant at all. So you're looking at, we're looking at the front of the restaurant where there's a, kind of like a rounded, was it register there? Those are counters for just registers for pickup.
So you're going to be 100% takeout and delivered?
Correct. The only thing we'll have is seating outside. They provide a small patio for us out there, so we'll have seating outside in the summertime and the spring.
And assuming you get all your permits and everything else, when are you planning on opening?
Well, what I understand is I go through this particular board here, and then I've got to go through another board, the first of December around the fourth. Then after that, we'll have to start doing some, you know, work in the restaurant, I'm thinking between two to three weeks afterwards, so probably the first of the year.
Oh, okay.
There isn't a lot of work to do in the restaurant we're going to do. Most of the equipment that's in there now, and all the hood system and all the plumbing and electrical is all in place from the previous restaurant. Everything needs to be, you know, checked out, cleaned, which is, you know, normal. Then we'll do some painting in the restaurant, but very little work needs to be done in it for us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Here, Glenn, can, I don't know if anybody else is on the line that wishes to comment on this application, Mr. Sermon?
Yeah, I'm looking at Teams chat, and I do not see any questions or comments on Teams chat, and if I could ask Lisa Roberts if she sees anything on YouTube chat?
No YouTube chat and no email.
All right, thank you. So maybe we're ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to recommend granting a request for special use for a limited-service restaurant, Cluckers Charcoal Chicken, at 1515 Sheridan Road. In accordance with the plan submitted, the use will run with the use.
I'll second that. Okay. Go ahead, Maria.
I'm delighted to see a space that's been empty for three years be reopened under a new banner. I am surprised that a restaurant is opening in this pandemic time, but given that it's all carryout and that's basically what's required during the pandemic, I'm happy that the times suit the model that Cluckers Chicken is following. I can support this.
Thank you.
I would agree and I fully support this. I think there was a reason why the last restaurant did not do well there, and I don't think it had anything to do with the location or anything else. I think there was a problem with the food that was coming out. So I think this is a great addition to have, a place like Cluckers. I can say that my wife independently this summer was up in Highwood and ended up at Cluckers for lunch and came back and raved about the place, and so she was surprised to hear that there's a chance that you guys might be in Wilmatt, and she was very excited. So I think this is a great addition.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I concur with my colleagues and I'm excited to give it a try.
I would say, you know, the fact that it was a restaurant, that it is going to be yet another restaurant, that there's no indoor seating, it seems like a no-brainer, so I can support it certainly.
This is Chris. I too concur. Glad to see, you know, a business opening in Plaza Del Lago.
Good. I agree also. It's great to have another option among the many restaurants that we have now in Wilmatt, so I obviously can support it as well. Can we go and call the roll, Mr. Sermon? Call for a vote, I should say.
You're on mute.
You're muted, Mr. Sermon.
Thank you. Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Slater?
Yes. So, Mr. Mertinger, this goes with an unanimous recommendation from the zoning board to the Village Board, and they will meet and consider this case on November 24th. If you may want to attend, they may have some questions for you, although my sense is I don't think there will be a lot of objections to this. Thank you, Mr. Mertinger. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Is this a meeting on November 24th, an in-person meeting, or again on the internet?
It will be the same format.
Okay. Maybe you and I can talk, Lucas, how to get a little better.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was an issue on our end.
No, I'd love to be able to, you know, to see the board and have them see me as well. And I thank you all for your consideration and your approval. My wife and I are excited about it. Got to be a little crazy to be opening a restaurant this time, as you all say, but I think it's the right fit for the right place, and this is a real test for us to see if this model works. If it does, I think that's our future for growth, our operations.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020-C-36.
I'll second that. Okay.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Slater?
Yes. Now we come to the point where I have to ask whether there's anyone out there that wishes to speak on any topic at all, and Lucas and Lisa, can you let us know?
There are no comments or questions on Teams chat.
And no other comments on YouTube? And no other comments on YouTube chat or emails.
They might therefore move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's proceed to vote, Mr. Sarberson.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Chalkurban?
Yes.
And Chairman Slater?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.